Good morning. Welcome to the City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our City Council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
President.
Councilwoman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra is absent today. Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask one of our Youth in Government students, Damiya Taylor, to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads and pray. Lord, I want to thank you for allowing us to gather here this morning to be able to have this meeting. Lord, I pray that you're in this room as we go through everything. I pray that you speak through us and to us and allow us to make the right decisions today. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in Council meetings held on April 16th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of April 12th through the 18th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations and recognition of special guests. Mayor Ford, do you have any proclamations today?
No, sir.
All right. Well, we do have some very special guests with us today. This is the annual Youth in Government Day. It's sponsored by the YMCA in conjunction with the City of Gadsden and the City Council. So if you are with the Youth in Government Day, if you're a student from Gadsden City High School, please stand and be recognized. Thank y'all very much for being here today. Today's been really interesting. They get to shadow from the mayor's office and the City Council members, various department heads, and it's just, it's a great day to hear questions and comments from our youth. They are the future of tomorrow and they're bright students and we're very proud of you and we're glad you're here. I also want to recognize we have the Superintendent of Education, Mr. Keith Blackwell's here today, along with Joel Gullidge, the Principal of Gadsden City High School. Glad y'all are here. Listen, this is off the cuff, but I want to give you an opportunity. Mr. Blackwell gets to speak from time to time and get to say hello, but Mr. Gullidge, you're our new principal at the high school and if you would like to say a few words about our students, about our school, this is unprepared. He's a good friend of mine. He's nice enough to come up, but we're proud of Mr. Gullidge. He was a longtime principal at Gadsden Middle School and is now our principal at Gadsden City High School. So welcome to the City Council meeting, Principal.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come forward to speak. Like I said, really didn't plan on this, but that's okay. I've been put in these situations before.
That's right. I knew you could do it.
You know, it's just a great opportunity for the students to come forth and be able to see how government actually works, you know, kind of maybe not totally behind closed doors and stuff like that, but to really see how this city works. You know, when we were gathering and getting ready our strategic plan for the Gadsden City School Systems, you know, one thing kept reverberating in the meetings is as the city goes, the school goes, or as the system goes, and as the school system goes, the city goes. So to be able to work in conjunction, you know, it's been a great strides with this new leadership and Council making the city better, but letting the students be able to see how that works and be part of that. Because if we can make the city go positive as the way it's been going, the system will go, and then we just do it in conjunction to make this city just a bigger and better thing than it already is. But I appreciate the opportunity for you allowing these tremendous students, you see the best and the brightest of Gadsden City High School here, but there's a lot more of them. I wish we could have more students that could be part of it, and we're kind of, you know, hadn't said anything to Mr. Blackwell yet, but trying to get, you know, maybe an elective class next year for Youth in Government. That is an annual thing and can go to competitions. We've been working with YMCA in Montgomery, do some competitions to build this program. So, but again, we just appreciate the opportunity for allowing our students to be part of this day and thank you for what you do for the City of Gadsden.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Ford?
So I just, I wanted to be noted that Brett Johnson was a product of Youth in Government, and that's how I met him and he got involved in some of my campaigns and worked with us in Montgomery, and he was part of Youth in Government when he was in high school.
Oh, that's great. Way to go, Brett. That's a good deal. I also want to recognize Chris Sullivan. Chris, where are you? You're in the back? Chris is a familiar face around here on Youth in Government Day. Chris, would you like to say anything about your students or about the program? If you would, you're welcome to come forward, and I want to thank you as you're coming forward for all the work you do. I could tell from our conversation in the Council chambers, the Council conference room, rather, that you've done a really good job preparing your students for today.
Well, it's all about the kids. Like Mr. Gullidge said, we've got probably the brightest from Gadsden City High School, and we have all female City Council this time. I don't think we've ever done that before, so our mayor, John Kittle, he's got his hands full with all the females. We do appreciate this opportunity. In our government economics classes, we get to talk about, you know, national governments, state governments, but we very rarely ever talk about city government, and I think it's just an amazing opportunity to allow them to see how the city and local governments operate. So we appreciate this opportunity.
Well, thank you, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman.
President Back, do you think it's possible since those who are viewing the Council meeting, that they would be able to see those students in student government if they could come up and we take a picture or?
Oh, that's a great idea. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, if we could have a photo. So Youth in Government students, if you'll come up and, these gentlemen are going to move out of the way, I guess, if you'll come line up right up here, we'll get a picture. Yeah. All right. Good idea. Come up, Mayor. There you go.
Slick your eyebrows down.
All right, count three. One, two, three. One more. And one more. One, two, three.
All right, thank y'all. Thank you, Councilwoman Latham. And they will, this group, we're going to have lunch after the Council meeting, and then they're going to come back at around 1:30 and they're going to have their own City Council meeting. So they'll get to have their own agenda and their own day up here. So we're excited for that. It's going to be really good.
I'd like to eat at 12.
Oh, no, eat at 12. We got, I gotta talk fast if they want to eat at 12. Okay, item number eight is unfinished business. We have none today. Item nine is a resolution authorizing Second Amendment to Economic Development Agreement with TSC Gadsden LLC and AL-58 Dyn LLC for location of a tropical smoothie cafe at 931 Rainbow Drive. This specifies TSC Gadsden LLC as the developer and AL-58 Dyn LLC as the tenant. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is an ordinance under first reading amending City Code, Chapter 74. This is license and taxation, Article 3, privileged license tax, Section 74-63, 74-67, 74-82, 74-91, and 74-92. This amends business license code sections to adjust the duties of the revenue director, modify penalties for underpayment or fraudulent business license activity, reclassify certain license types, and expand tiers on certain schedules. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading and the Council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, if it's okay with you, due to several different scheduling and timeline concerns with implementation of new software and several other things, if there's no objections, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
All right, item 11 is new business. I believe we have quite a few this morning.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I have several here. And before we get started, for those in the audience, I just want to give you a brief explanation of what we're about to do. Typically, in day-to-day business at the City Council, we would have a resolution or an ordinance that we would discuss during pre-council, the meeting we just had, and then we would vote on that particular issue the following week. Well, from time to time, there are issues that arise in city government that have to be addressed right away, that we don't have time to wait until next week. So when we find ourselves in those situations, what we have to do is suspend the rules and consider it the same day that we introduce it. So what you're going to see over the next five resolutions and ordinances that we discuss is exactly that. We'll go through the process of suspending our normal rules so that we can vote on it the same week that it's in our folder, and then we'll vote to actually approve it. So every time, you'll see us vote to suspend the rules and then vote to pass the ordinance. So y'all just bear with us. The first one I have, Mr. President, is from the Transportation Department. This is a resolution authorizing our transit agency safety plan. This is important not only for the safety of our citizens, obviously, but it also has a lot to do, these plans have to be up to date and updated periodically to stay in compliance with the Federal Transit Administration, where we get a lot of our funding to fund these transit buses you see around. So in order not to jeopardize that FTA funding, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
There's a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, the next one I have comes from the Engineering Department. This is a resolution rejecting bid number 3453 for the Gadsden Sports Park irrigation pumping project. We put this bid out to develop a system for bringing water from the Coosa River to water all of our sports fields over at the new Gadsden Sports Park. It'll save the city a substantial amount of money long-term, but unfortunately, we only received one bid in response to this, and it was not in line with our budget. So the recommendation of the Engineering Department is that we reject this bid and start the process over. So with that in mind, to allow the Engineering Department to move forward, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, the next one I have is also from the Engineering Department via the Gadsden Airport Authority. This is a resolution approving the decision of the Gadsden Airport Authority regarding the closure of runway 1836 at the Northeast Alabama Regional Airport. For further clarification, we've known for quite some time out there, Gadsden is somewhat unique, our airport, in that we have two runways. That's pretty uncommon for regional airports like this, and the problem with that is the FAA will not fund the maintenance and upkeep of two runways. So in order to maintain those two runways at the Gadsden Airport Authority, or the Gadsden Airport, we have to come up with that money out of pocket, essentially, and it just doesn't make a lot of sense. The 1836 runway doesn't get used very often. Pilots don't prefer it. They would rather use the other runway, and if we can do away with this runway, it actually opens up a considerable amount of land that we can use to further develop the airport, be it with a new terminal or with some additional hangars for private aircraft and for commercial aircraft. It just gives us a lot more flexibility out there with what we can do and will be a much more efficient operation. So given that this can, we're in the middle of FAA grant season, when we're asking the federal government for our grant funds for the year to manage the runway, I would ask that we suspend this under new business, or suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, the next one I have here is from the Finance Department. This is a resolution authorizing a services agreement with KOA Hills Consulting LLC for guidance, configuration assistance, consulting, training, and documentation for key areas of the Tyler EERP financial implementation, beginning on May the 1st and ending on December the 31st, 2024. The total amount is $80,000. To add some insight here, we recently invested last year, one of the first things Mayor Ford and his team did was invest heavily in a new accounting software system for the city that is going to modernize our process on a lot of different things, and as part of that, it's a massive implementation project. We're transitioning out of a program and software that we've been running for 30-plus years here, so to migrate all that information over to this new software and get everybody trained up on how to use it effectively, it's going to, we need some help, essentially. So we've gone out and hired a third-party company that will come in and kind of walk us through the process of transitioning to this new software and getting everybody in the building trained up on it. So the sooner we can get that done, the better. So with that in mind, I would ask my colleagues to suspend the rules and allow us to consider this under new business today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, the last one I have, which is probably the most complex issue we have to talk about today, of course, it comes from the Legal Department. Those Legal Department ones are usually pretty complex. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement for hay cutting at the airport. It's real simple. The guys that go out and cut hay and cut all the grass at the airport, we got to sign a contract with them, and they're going to pay us three grand a year to go cut hay out there. So if there's no objections, I'd like to suspend the rules and codify this very critical contract for the city.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
That is all I have, Mr. President.
All right, you did a yeoman's job, Councilman Wilson. Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to, that's item 11, we'll go to item 12. This is Department Reports, Committees, and Boards. I believe we have at least one today, don't we, Mayor?
Yes.
We have Janet coming from the AMP.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having me today. I just wanted to step in and let you guys know, in case you don't, about our strawberry festival and blue jean brunch that we have coming up this weekend. It's going to be held at the ice skating rink location, the New Food Court area. We are going to have farmers there that have fresh local strawberries. We have several of those coming. We've got other farmers that will be there with like fresh beef and eggs and some of the spring-like vegetables and fresh beef. We also have craft vendors there. We're going to have food trucks there, bakers there. We invite everyone to come out. It is free to come and partake in the activities. You can bring your lawn chair, your blanket. Like, we're going to have food trucks there, so, and we're going to have the bar open. We'll be selling some mimosas and Bloody Marys for those of you that can drink. I know a lot of you in this room cannot, and I encourage you not to. But it's going to be a very fun day. We're going to have some cups out there for the kids to enjoy. We've got lots of green space, so it's going to be a great day to come and bring your blanket, and you can leave with a basket of strawberries. And I brought just our flyers here in case you guys don't have those. And also wanted to remind everyone about the Parrot Head Party at the AMP. Super excited about this day. We've got great performers, Jimmy Buffett tribute going on with the A1A Band, which is the official Jimmy Buffett Band. We've got Keith Burns coming and Erica Sunshine Lee, who performs a lot of Jimmy Buffett songs and plays a lot in Key West. It's going to be a great day. If you don't have your tickets, I encourage you to get them while we still have them. Also, if you dress like Jimmy Buffett or decide that you want to dress like Jimmy Buffett, we are going to have a Jimmy Buffett look-alike contest and a cash prize of $500. So it's going to be a lot of fun. There's a lot of things that we have not let leak yet that we do have in store, that there's going to be some kind of surprises. So it's going to be a great day, and we look forward to having everybody out. Tickets are on sale now while they last. Concert is May 11th, and I've got those flyers also.
Speaking of Jimmy Buffett look-alike, a lot of people don't know this about our city attorney. I'm just kidding.
They love picking on you, Lee. And then I also have had a few questions about the summer concert series. There is a press release coming out about the concert, and then also there's been some questions about Farmer's Market. Yes, we are having Farmer's Market. That will start in June. Will be located at Fifth Street Market, and we have got a lot of great farmers, new additions coming to Farmer's Market, and we look forward to all of that fresh fruit and vegetables of the summertime, so be on the lookout for that.
Thank you so much. What a lot of activity going on, Mayor. There's a, for those that don't think there's anything to do in Gadsden, there's a lot to do in Gadsden. There is, thank you all. All right, any other committees, boards, departments? Not, we'll move to remarks by the Mayor and Council. I'll invite Mayor Ford to lead us off.
So speaking of a lot to do, Mr. President, members of council, last Saturday night, I went to Friends of the Falls organization, and not only was it a great event, I got to tell you, we had a personal fireworks show by two council members, Councilman Jason Wilson and Chris Robinson.
Went off without a hitch.
Yeah, the two, the people supposed to do the fireworks show were sick, and so I look across the falls into the sunset, and I see one firework hit Councilman Wilson right in the neck. And it sure did. And then we started a little brush fire, but we were able to put that out, but let me tell you, they did a great job, and being honest, they, it was beautiful. It's the first time, I believe, a fireworks show's ever been shot over the falls. The photos they got of that event are amazing. If you didn't see them on Facebook, please look at them and capture them and share them. Apparently, James Fann loves some knuckle little falls, because he posts about it all the time. So I wanted to mention that. I wanted to talk about the ribbon cutting yesterday. I'm going to make all this short, because I got a lot of notes, but the ribbon cutting yesterday, thank you to Councilman Wilson, Councilman Back, and the previous council, and Frankie Davis and Sherman Gotten for their vision and y'all seeing this field of dreams, or champions field is what they call it, and what we were able to do out there, and also we had a groundbreaking, so I wanted to give credit where credit's due, but thank you all, and I thought it was wonderful. I loved our speaker. I was sitting with Councilman Smith and Councilman Back, and this kid was just waving. The lady was sign languaging, and he thought that she was waving at him. He just kept waving, didn't understand why she, he wouldn't wave, so I let him speak. He was wonderful. It was such a blessing. I mean, and I kept hearing Pastor Smith say, "Amen, amen." I thought, boy, we can't say amen enough to this, but it was just a good, it was a great day. I want to congratulate our Youth in Day leaders. As I mentioned earlier, Brett did this. Who knows who's coming out of it next? And I've enjoyed already meeting with the two that I've met with and quizzed them a lot about Gadsden, what it'd take to bring y'all back, and I love hearing your thoughts and ideas, and please, have fun. This is what it's about. John Morris said, anybody that'd sit here and listen to this all day, they'll never go in government. But I think a lot has been done today. Do not forget that the cleanup day is Friday. You can sign up on the City website. That is for the public to be involved in also, not only just employees, all the information's there. As you mentioned, the Parrot Head Party at May 11th. Tickets are on sale at cityofgadsden.com. We are running low on tickets, so if you want them, you better get them. One thing I wanted to talk about is, I had an email from the Finance Department about overtime expenses for the police and the Fire Department, that we were hitting our max. So I had a meeting with Chief Jaggers and Chief Reed. It's funny how finance and a budget works. When the Fire Department is almost 100% full, their overtime went down. So they're in control of their overtime, and they still have to use overtime, and we understand that, and we support that, because a lot of times, they have vacation. The Police Department is a different egg. They have almost 20 slots that are unfilled, salaried or slot positions that are budgeted but not filled, so we take that money and we move it to overtime. And in the meantime, we're trying to hire many police officers as we can also. So I wanted the Police and Fire Department, they weren't in that meeting, to realize I have authorized overtime again to go back into effect, and we are also heavily recruiting today. Chief Jaggers and I swore in two police officers with Ms. Iva Nelson, and we're excited about that, and I think he said there's some more coming. So I don't want them to think that I've cut out overtime, because that's not the case. Many residents will receive a text message today at 12:30 PM from the City of Gadsden. This is our new text, my Gov platform, to better communicate with citizens. Soon, we'll be promoting our new City app, so I want, especially you youth, please sign up for that. It also will have all the events in Gadsden going on, and you'll get it on your phone in an app. The Gadsden Land Bank's now open. Open. Hal Ray is over the land bank with the direction of Aaron and Rod. They're helping. They're going through applications within the next few weeks, so if you have any questions, please get with Hal Ray or Aaron or Rod to be able to see what's going on there, but we have a lot of applications that have come in on the land bank, and we're excited about it. I want to tell you this. We got some questions from some political blogs about the new anti-D-E-I law. I want it to be clear, nothing in that law applies to Ruth Moffett's position for the City of Gadsden. We are going to continue to do what we're doing in serving Gadsden citizens. If you know Ruth, like I know Ruth, she doesn't do anything out of the boundaries of the law, but that law does not apply to municipalities. So blogs don't scare me, and blogs don't define our narrative here for the City of Gadsden. The last thing I want to say is, yesterday, unfortunately, I was headed to a softball game, playing on Old Man's League, if you could like to see that. That's quite amusing. But I got a call from our Fire Chief and our Police Chief, and we had a bad accident If you know Ruth, like I know Ruth, she doesn't, she doesn't do anything out of, out of the boundaries of the law, but that law does not apply to municipalities. So blogs don't scare me, and blogs don't define our narrative here for the City of Gadsden. The last thing I wanna say is, yesterday unfortunately, I was headed to a softball game, playing an old man's league, if you could like to see that. That's quite amusing. But I got a call from our fire chief and our police chief, and we had a, we had a bad accident right down here on Walnut and 411. You might have read about it, seen about it, or heard about it. But unfortunately, a motorcycle was traveling at a high rate of speed, probably triple digits or higher. He hit a pickup truck. We had some deceased people in the accident. One was an infant. But I wanna tell you this. When I showed up, I saw the police and the fire working together like a bond that I've never seen. To see these police officers screaming, yelling, worrying, trying to hurry up to get the 911 help for an infant was just really sad and would bring tears to your eyes to see what we saw. And these police officers, what they go, go through, and firemen, what they go through for the amount of pay that we pay them, I, I don't know how they do it. So they, they witnessed some things that I hope they would ever, nobody would ever witness in their life, and I just wanna say thank you to them, to the police and fire. We had lifelike helicopters taking them back and forth. We had all sorts of stuff taking place. And of course, when I show up, Chief Jaggers to make sure I stay out of the way, while he's still conducting his operation, and so does Chief Reed. But to see them work together, ladies and gentlemen, is amazing. And, and for one of them to come to me and say, "Hey, if we had this piece of equipment, we could do this, or we could do that," now, man, let me tell you, I can promise you, I'm gonna present it to the council, and I can promise you, probably the council will vote for it. We want you to have all the necessary resources that you need to be able to do what you need, Chief, and Chief Reed, if he's listening. But unfortunately, there were three fatalities, and it's just a sad situation. But I want you to pray for our police officers and our fire, that were on the scene, that had to see this and witness this. And it's just, I don't wanna explain it because of, you know, what they're going through today. They're still going through tough times, and rightfully so, probably for the rest of their life, it'll, it'll be branded on their brain. But I just wanna thank them for what they do, and I can't say it enough, and it's just, it's amazing what they do for the City of Gadsden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Appreciate those words. Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you, President Beck. I just wanna say, it's been a wonderful day of youth in government, having the youth here. Thank you for your input and just being able to speak with you, those who serve as councilmen. It was lovely sharing with you this morning. I just wanna say to the young lady, I cannot remember your name, thank you for the invocation this morning. Thank you so much. I wanna say to the mayor, as to the things that he just said about our fire department and our police department and the ability to work together, let me just say thank you to you. Well, thank God for the leadership that we have. In a lot of cases, in most cases, organizations take on the attitude, a lot to do with the attitude, the environment, that is contingent on the leader. So thank you for the attitude that you have as far as this being a team and really working together, and the comments you made about Ms. Moffett and her position. So thank you. Thank you to the city council and all for the things that we do and the, the environment, the, the peace that we have, the, being able to do what we do in the type of environment that we do. It, it's rewarding. There are challenges, but it is rewarding, and I'm grateful to be in this position and be able to feel it, and just to take, be able to be a part of the things that are going on in our city. And I wanna encourage District One, the cleanup day is Friday. I wanna encourage District One to go to the website and sign up for that, and we'll be there and ready to do, and do our part to make our city clean. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Well said. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanna say thank you, Mayor Ford, you and your staff, the leadership and all that you do, the council, all the department heads. Our hearts go out to the families that lost loved ones in accidents, so we will continue to keep them lifted up in prayer. It's a sad situation. So we had a great day today with the kids here, just a great group of kids here today, students in government. Of course, all of them were bright, but of course I had Kylie, who reminded everybody, she, she's in District Two, who's an active member, who goes to church in District Two as well. But it was great to have all of you here today, and hopefully you learned something, and hopefully we learned a lot from you all, Mayor. They talked about the city, they wanted to know how the districts were set up. I told them maybe next year we can get the president back to have a, a big map on the wall, so that they can actually see. But they were very engaged, a lot of questions, so just a great group of kids that represented the high school, represented your teachers, represented the principal and the superintendent well. So thank you all for being here today. We look forward to the cleanup, the city day on Friday. Even if you haven't signed up, even if you don't get a shirt, still come out and volunteer and help us. One of the things the kids, the kids told us, that they can clearly see how clean the city is. The children told us this morning. So we're excited about getting out there, working together on this Friday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll also, ditto off of one of Council Latham's comments as it relates to D-E-I and, and the mayor comments as it relates to the blogs and the, the difference between the state and the municipality. So great for the, to hear that support. I also hope our educational system will consider that as well. Grateful to have Ms. Moffett along with us for those opportunities that, that, that position provides. Want to mention that this Saturday, coming Saturday, our last will, District Three Last Will and Testament event will be postponed. There was a death that the black, one of the Black Chambers members ha, have passed, and so that, that memorial service will be this Saturday, so we'll postpone to attend that. Also, this morning, got a call around, 2:00, 2:30-ish this morning, my neighbor passed, so I wanna give condolences to that family without saying the name right now, just because I don't think the family, all the family members have properly been notified. And to all of the bereaved families, just our hearts go out with, to you as it relates to the passing of your family members. Wanna give a big shout out to Victoria McGinnis and Emma Sansum Rebel grad, and she has graduated from Gadsden State. She's a cancer survivor, so I just want along with her, just her encouraging others to continue on, to continue the fight as a cancer survivor, but also that you're not too old, and it's not too late to continue your education as well. As the young people came with youth in government, we, I heard some great comments as it relates to where they're going to college. What is the next, I think Councilman, Councilman Wilson asked, "What is next from here?" And they gave the different schools that they're going to, so it's very encouraging. I too am a product of youth in government. Never thought that I, my, my, my going through youth in government wasn't to be here. I just wanted to be a lobbyist, and so it did bring me to this, this front. But grateful to have sat in those seats where you are, to learn those mock bills and go through the process and things of that nature. So kudos to all of you who are going through that program and so much success for your future. May 1st will begin the first Saturday with CCRC. All people, all over are welcome as normal. There's a lot of vendors have signed up already, and so just looking for community fun. I want to, I guess, appreciate those with the past event of this past weekend with flashback. I think everything turned out well, so thanks to that organization for their continuous work. And today, if I'm not mistaken, this also, this weekend, we did a very huge celebration for two of, one of the oldest members in the state of Alabama, who are right here in, in the City of Gadsden. So I think today is officially their birthday, so to the Gray Twins, I want to wish you from this seat 102, your 102nd birthday to the Gray Twins. Thank you so much for all that you have given to our community. One is retired from General Forest, the other one is retired from the steel plant, and thank you to the Almighty for keeping them around. They do not look 102 at all, and very sharp with the brain and very sharp with the mouth. So I wanted to again wish you all a happy birthday. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna again say how much I enjoyed spending time with you guys today in youth in government. It's always fun. I can assure you that when I was in high school, I was not participating in youth in government. I wouldn't describe myself as the best and the brightest, but it's, you guys have no idea how much further ahead of everybody else you're placing yourself by participating in programs like this. You know, when you participate in programs like this and you start to see how the world works and how your local government works, you are miles ahead of other young adults your age as far as your academic progress. So even though you might not realize it now, it's put you a step ahead for sure. Also, thank you to everybody involved with Friends of the Falls this weekend, as the mayor said. I was fortunate to be asked to participate in that event, and it went off without a hitch. It was wonderful, but it was, it was great, and people don't realize what it takes to support such a huge natural resource like Nakalula Falls. I mean, it's a massive piece of property up there, and there's so much going on, so local citizens, this is another example to the young people in the audience of how you can get involved. I mean, these are just local citizens that out of, just because they love the, love the outdoors and love the natural resources of Nakalula Falls, they volunteer their time to go up there and clean up and develop trails and invest and raise money to install improvements all throughout that campground. So without organizations like that, and the Gadsden Runners Club and all these other great organizations we have in this community, we couldn't do what we do, so thank y'all. And, Mr. President, a personal point of privilege, I just wanna acknowledge Superintendent Blackwell, I appreciate your help this past weekend. You made me a very popular uncle.[1355.62][1355.62](laughter)
Way to go. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, it won't be long. I know all these students are ready to get to their lunch and then get back over here and, and perform their day of leadership, but me and Councilman Wilson, we did discuss, we're willing to take over any fireworks show for the City of Gadsden, or terms or whatever. I think that'd be kinda fun, entertainment at least. Again, I'm not gonna, I have a little list here, and as, as everybody speaks, I just mark off, well, that's been said, that's been said, so I'm not gonna repeat all this stuff. But yeah, thanks to everybody in youth in government. I, it was, it was great sitting up with you guys, talking to you guys and, and hearing your questions and, and just getting your concerns. I know Councilman Back's gonna talk about this, but I'll go real quick. We do have a concert, it's this Thursday, the Damon Johnson Concert, and all that money goes to DGI, the Downtown Gadsden Corporation. I think John Player's gonna be there. You can probably say the other two. I don't have them stood on top of my head, but there's still some balcony seats available, I believe, so we can, we can get that thing sold out, and it's gonna be a good show. Last, I hope, I figured this one would get marked off fairly quick, but we do have a birthday out there. Mr. Porch, I hope you don't mind me saying happy birthday to you.[1423.44][1423.44](laughter) That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
That's great. Well, happy birthday, Mr. Porch. That's a...
Yeah, I really appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Well, we appreciate you. And so I will say that this Thursday night at the Pittman, at the historic Pittman Theater on Broad Street, for a benefit for Downtown Gadsden Incorporated, DGI, which is headed up by Kay Moore, Steve Gilbert, who's a friend of mine and of ours up here, is friends with Damon Johnson. Damon Johnson comes from Geraldine, Alabama. He formed a group years ago called Brother Kane, which you've probably never, some of you younger folks never heard of them, but you can YouTube, Google search Brother Kane. They're, they're, they're pretty cool. And he played with Alice Cooper. He was the lead guitarist in, for Alice Cooper for six years, traveled all over the world, played in an audience of 80, 90,000 people in stadiums in Europe and, and the United States. Currently, he's the lead guitarist for a, a group called Leonard Skinnerd, and they're, they have schedules all over the world, traveling all over the planet playing. So he's, he comes home, loves to play at, at the Pittman. He just loves the, the Pittman. He calls it like his, kind of his home turf, and he's bringing one of his best friends, a guy named Buck Johnson. Buck Johnson is the keyboard player for a group called Aerosmith. Anybody ever heard of Aerosmith? And also a group called the Hollywood Vampires. Y'all, these are world-class, this is like saying Michael Jordan's gonna come play basketball at our local high school gym. You know, y'all come out and see Michael Jordan play basketball. These guys are on that, that level, so I encourage you all to, encourage y'all to come out.
He is at the Tallahassee.[1532.54][1532.54](laughter) He is at the Tallahassee.
Hey, this is, wait a minute now. This is, this, this is my time. This is, y'all, y'all've had your time.
Ken, I'm waiting to show in our age.[1546.54][1546.54](laughter)
Yeah, that's right. Or Katelyn Clark, maybe. Maybe I'll just go Young. I'll just go Katelyn Clark. But the point is that these guys are world-class musicians. And then there's a local guy named John Player, who is a world-class musician, if he wanted to be a world-class musician, but he chooses to live here in Gadsden. He is phenomenal, and he's just a great guy to boot, but he's playing along with them. And so, so it's just gonna be a great night. There are only balcony seats left, $35. I think those are probably the best seats in the house, but anyway, come to the Pittman Theater, help Downtown Gadsden Incorporated. I wanna thank Mayor Ford for yesterday, the ribbon cutting and the groundbreaking. If you haven't been to the Gadsden Sports Park on the Gadsden State Community College campus, you need to drive over there. It's just phenomenal. We had a, it was just a, a great day, and I wanna thank Mayor Sherman Guyton and Frankie Davis and the, and the prior council for the vision, like Mayor Ford had said. Y'all, we had a, a Champions Field ribbon cutting yesterday, and for those of you that might be familiar with the Field of Dreams or special needs type field, Gadsden now has one of those. It's a million-dollar-plus concept over there, playground equipment for children with disabilities and, and special needs. We had dozens of those students there, those children, and it just, it just warms your heart to see them. Now they have their own field. We've spent millions of dollars for, for other students and for other kids over there, but now we've included all citizens in Gadsden and Etowah County for the sports park over there, and it's just a remarkable place. You could see it in the children's faces and in the parents' faces. They're, they're so pleased that they've been included in our, in our, in our city plan, so thanks, Mayor Ford. And then Phase Four, that was the end of Phase Three. Phase Four has opened up. We had a groundbreaking for that, more soccer fields with synthetic turf, more baseball and softball fields, more parking, more pickleball courts. There's a great vision going on for sports over there, all in a great partnership with Mayor Ford and the City of Gadsden and Dr. Kathy Murphy in Gadsden State Community College. We're really, really having a great time with, with Dr. Murphy on planning over there. Mayor Ford's working hand-in-hand with her on many projects over there at, at the sports park, so one day we'll quit turning dirt over there. It'll all be finished. It'll all be nice and paved and done, but right now it's still in the construction, but, but you can see the vision going on over there, so it's, it's just a wonderful, wonderful time. And to the youth in government students, thank you. Mr. Sullivan, thank you for your leadership, and Mr. Gullish and Mr. Blackwell, thank y'all for what you do to make all this possible. It's a lot of moving parts, and we know we have lunch, and then you guys are gonna come back and have your own council meetings, so just do, do well, and, and I know you will have a good day. I wanna say, we had breakfast provided this morning from our friends at Food City. Their deli provided biscuits for us this morning, and then Cothran's Bakery, as they always do, they provided the doughnuts. And it's interesting, Chris Cothran, the owner of Cothran's Bakery, attended, graduated from Litchfield High School. He was in the very first youth in government class that, that came to the City of Gadsden, so he really likes to help and support. So I wanna just thank those two organizations, Food City and Cothran's Bakery, for their help today. And also wanna end, in conjunction with Mayor Ford's, talk about yesterday's unfortunate happening. We, we are so blessed to have who we have in our city as first responders, ambulance care, and Fire Department and the Police Department. Again, condolences to the families, and we'll have to keep them in our prayers for days to come. It just, that, that's, that's just a super unfortunate incident, but thankful that we have men and women that work for our city that are up to the task, and we'll keep them in our prayers as well.